Good evening, everyone. If we could rise for the National Anthem.
Renew Your calls for a fresh start and a sale. The Home Hardware Renew Your Sale is on now.
The municipality of Central Algen acknowledges that it is located on the land of the Maquis Treaty that was signed by the Weyandat and the Ashen Shambi nations, including ancestors of Chipewa, of the Thames First Nations. It is also the traditional territory of the Hadashani, Adawan, Duronk, and Mississauga nations. The First Nations continue to provide ongoing stewardship of our land and waters in the municipality of Central Algen. I remind council of disclosures of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. Seeing none, we'll move on to our delegation tonight. Long Point Biosphere Regional Region, Ms. Sarah Emmons. Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you so much for having me, Central Algen Council and staff. I've never, never got to be in front of this council before, so it's, it's really fun to get to go around to talk to everybody in, in this latoral cell. So today I'm here to talk about a funding opportunity that could have benefits for a wide range of organizations across this latoral cell, including municipalities, conservation authorities, and other organizations. Slide please. The, the first question I want to address is what is a latoral cell? That's not something that we talk about very often, at least not for, you know, average people. I had to ask when I became involved in this project. And we all know that, you know, as, as municipalities, we sit on these conservation authority boards. We know that the functional unit to manage rivers in is a watershed. That's why they're organized that way. And the functional unit of the shoreline along the coast is a latoral cell. So it occurs on the coastline and consists of zones of erosion, sediment transport, and deposition. They're naturally dynamic systems. And our latoral cell starts in Port Glasgow and has all of our eroding bluffs. And this, as the sediment is transported along the shore, it ends up in that major depositional zone in Long Point. And that's a slide, please. So the north shore of Lake Erie and the Long Point sandspit are world renowned for their natural and cultural heritage, the recreational opportunities they provide, and their blue economy. However, our shoreline faces multiple challenges. Climate change is projected to lead to higher lake levels, and we continue to see less lake ice over time. This is resulting in more exposure to winter storms and an acceleration in the rates of erosion. This is also increasing rates of flooding with frequency and magnitude, and will result in more loss of our coastline and damage to private property and infrastructure. Slide please. In addition to the increase in erosion rates, Long Point itself is being starved of sand and sediment. We know that the natural coastal processes responsible for the formation of the Long Point sandspit have been altered by some of our harbor infrastructure in the latoral cell, as well as hardening of the shoreline. So presently, the entire south shore of the sandspit from Cove Road to the tip of Long Point is, is eroding, and it's resulting in the permanent loss of coastal wetlands, over 300 hectares since 1964, as well as damage to the recreational beaches and impacts to the coastal communities. Slide please. Beginning this fall, individuals concerned about coastal erosion threats to infrastructure and the disappearing coastal wetlands began meeting. And they recognize that to work, to reverse these negative trends and the future progression, levels of government and local communities need to work together at the appropriate spatial scale on a regional coastal management response and to these coastal hazards. So on December 8th, the term Working Group was, was adopted to recognize this ongoing collaboration between all of the, the, the organizations and individuals that you see here. So working together partners can develop common goals and co-develop solutions with the engagement of government, local organizations, First Nations, and community members. Only through partnership will this be accomplished. And we can go to the next slide, please. On December 15th of this, of 2023, I almost said of this year, funding, funding was released from Environment and Climate Change Canada, focused on restoring and protecting our coastal areas. So these funding requests can be anywhere from $100,000 to $6 million. The application is due February 15th, and these projects need to focus on local level action to restore and protect critically important coastal areas. Environment Canada has identified Long Point and parts of Elgin County on this map here as being critically important coastal areas. Next slide, please. So we have a, a framework for this submission already developed. We, we've started off with this, this Working Group, the Latoral Cell Resilience Committee. And then we, we will be working towards baseline assessments and vulnerability assessments. This is going to be a lot of technical work involving a spectrum of, of experts in terms of shorelines and as well as regulatory professionals to develop plans that would be appropriate in terms of taking action and implementing projects. Next slide, please. I just want to highlight on the draft organizational chart that's been developed, and I apologize for the small font, but we, we would, we are planning to have a technical advisory committee so that there would be, again, these experts in engineering and geomorphology, as well as the regulatory agencies, as well as a public advisory committee. There needs to be intensive community engagement on a topic like this because of the wide variety of stakeholders that live all across the latoral zone. Slide please. So some of the potential scope items would be, again, this extensive community engagement and the Public Advisory Committee. The vulnerability assessment for roads, infrastructure, and building. This would be that technical work, developing a sediment budget for the shoreline and, and engaging in modeling exercises so that we really understand what's happening with the erosion and sediment transport and deposition. This could be useful to municipalities in order to update our hazard mapping so that we, we have a better understanding of the threats that could be facing our infrastructure. We're all familiar with that in Elgin County. And we'd also look at restoring beaches and dunes through nature-based solutions. This fund is entirely focused on nature-based solutions. There's not any infrastructure money that's included in this funding. And we'd also look at some of the issues facing the harbors and how we might address those, those harbor issues. So slide, right now, we're speaking to various partners and, and more partners that we hope to engage with, requesting letters of support from the Working Group and to confirm some kind of potential financial report, financial support from partners. This can take the form of in-kind staff support. So participation in the Working Group meetings or the technical work could, could be included in that. And now I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you, Sarah. Does anybody from council have a question for Sarah?
And I can't see my, my co-applicant here, Peter Zusek, on this slide, but he is here to, to help answer these questions as well.
Council helping.
Thank you through you, Deputy Mayor. I don't have a question per se, but I would like to thank you for clarifying some things here. I did have someone from a community group reach out to me earlier, concerned that, that they could see that you were working on this very large project, but they didn't know if the community was going to be involved in it. And I can see that you are planning to be inclusive of that. So thank you so much for helping us to understand what's going on here.
We would definitely hope to, to have community engagement forums. We're potentially at, at the Port communities, Port Rowan, Port Burwell, and Port Stanley. Those are the communities that are, you know, most impacted. And we've already started engaging with some community groups. We've already spoken to the Long Point Ratepayers Associations. That community is, is very, very much impacted by the coastal issues. So we've already begun that work.
Thank you, Sarah. Will there be any community members that are part of this group? Like between, say, Southold all the way down to Long Point?
The exact structure of the Public Advisory Committee, we have not, you know, really figured that out yet, how that would be structured, how many, you know, how many people. But we would definitely want to include representation from the entirety of the latoral cell. That would be really important so that everyone's voice is heard.
Thank you. Does anybody else have questions for Ms. Emmons? Well, thank you so much for coming to our council and sticking around as we had a late start. Appreciate it.
Happy to be here. Thank you very much.
Moving on to our next delegation, Emergency Management Ontario, Holly Roberts and Darren Dees. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, council and staff, for having us here tonight. We are here to do a presentation to give you some high-level background on emergency management concepts and components, and talk a little bit about council's role and how you fit into emergency management as a whole. As you can see on the slide, this is from our Senior Elected Officials workshop. I recognize some faces in the group who were there in attendance last year and happy to see you all again. This is a fast and furious version of that workshop, given that we only have 30 minutes. We're happy to provide the full deck afterwards as well, if you'd like. But we ask if you can kindly hold your questions till the end while we get through all the slides, and we can go from there. Next slide, please. So just a high-level overview of what you're going to see tonight in this presentation. We'll do a quick introduction of ourselves. We'll talk about five components of comprehensive emergency management. We'll briefly go through the municipal emergency management programs and some of the required components through that, as well as talking about the pillars of preparedness. And last but not least, the most common topic in emergency management is response. So walking through a little bit of that declaration of emergency process and what the incident response structure may look like. Next slide, please. So brief background, my name is Holly Robear. I come from Chatham, Kent, small town of Tilbury, if you're aware of that area. Along with my colleague in the sector, we operate through the St. Clair Sector. So my areas of responsibility include Windsor and Essex County, the township of Peely, Chatham, Kent, Elgin County, and St. Thomas.
And my name is Darren Dees. So I come from Southold Township, but I grew up in Central Algen. My dad still lives in Central Algen. And I cover Middlesex County, London, Lampton County, and Oxford County. And so we're here to share with you a little of our knowledge and to support and answer any questions about emergency management.
Next slide, please. So to briefly go through the five components of comprehensive emergency management, or what we deem as comprehensive emergency management, we have prevention, mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery. So prevention are the actions that we can take to stop an emergency from occurring. Always great if we can do that, although we do know that we can't stop tornadoes. We can't stop some of the things. So if we can't do that, we can take measures to mitigate an emergency. So if we can't prevent it, we can take actions to reduce the effects and the impacts from an emergency occurring. The next phase and the component is preparedness. So those are the actions that we take prior to an emergency to ensure that we're doing an effective response. And Darren will talk that in, in great detail in the pillars of preparedness section. And then the big bad thing happens, and I'll knock on wood and touch wood 100 times because I know it's been a busy last few, last few months and years for folks. But really, our response is the actions that we take during or after an emergency. And that's really to protect people, property, the environment, the economy, and the local services that you provide to your citizens. And after the emergency comes the building back part, the recovery. So after even during the process of the response, we start that recovery phase of trying to get the community back to a new sense of normal and back to that pre-disaster position. Next slide, please. So the emergency management program that municipalities must have is, is driven by the legal framework of the Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act, as well as the Supporting Ontario Regulation 3804. So every municipality, all 444 municipalities are required to have an emergency management program. As you can see on the slide, there are a lot of components to that program that the municipality has to do every year. So some examples of that include having a hazard and identification risk assessment. So identifying what your hazards are present in your municipality and how that works in terms of, you know, how we can assess the risk, whether we respond to it, and, and of that nature, critical infrastructure list, having an emergency response plan, probably one of the most important documents of how we're going to respond to an emergency when it happens. Doing annual training, exercises, operating out of an emergency operations center, and some key positions, including a community emergency management coordinator, who we happen to have here at council today, Chief Ormerod. Having and designating an emergency management program committee, a municipal emergency control group, as well as having an emergency information officer. Next slide, please. So talking briefly about the program bylaw. So every municipality under the Emergency Management Civil Protection Act has to adopt their program through a bylaw. Now, this can be done through what we have as an all-encompassing bylaw, which includes all of the required components that we typically look for from an EMO perspective, as well as it sometimes includes the response plan. So not only does the program have to be adopted by bylaw, but also the response plan. So we see that done either together under one bylaw or separated sometimes under two. Really, it's up to the preference of the municipality of how they want that structure to look. But there is that. The other thing too is that once a bylaw has been put in place, if there's no major changes to the program, you're not required to update it year after year. And there's language that can certainly be included in that bylaw. What we do recommend is that if there are no changes to the bylaw, and of course, year after year, we encourage municipalities and the program committee to get together and provide a report to council on how things are going with the program, any key major changes that might be coming up, perhaps any recommendations on how to change the program, maybe even some funding requests that we'll certainly talk about as well. Next slide, please. So a key role in supporting this program is the Community Emergency Management Coordinator. So under that act, every municipality has to have a designated Community Emergency Management Coordinator. Now, that looks very different across many municipalities. We see some communities have a designated full-time position for such a role, or we oftentimes see it's a double-handed position, whether that's with the fire chief, the CAO, the clerk. When that does happen, we certainly encourage strongly that those municipalities have at least one to two alternate CEMC so that if the fire chief, for example, is called away and must respond to an emergency or an incident, or is incapacitated, or whatever it may be, that there's an alternate available to fill that space. Being a CEMC is certainly a lot of work, especially when you have a double-handed position because, as you saw on a previous slide, there are a lot of requirements that must be completed throughout the year. And that's why as field officers, we're always happy to come and help your municipality in supporting you in meeting all of those requirements. So don't ever hesitate to give us a call. We're always very happy to help. There's kind of two facets in which the CEMC operates. They have an administrative role, and they also have a response-like role. So from the administrative side, they're really responsible for coordinating the development and implementation of that emergency management program, all of those program components that you saw on a previous slide. At the end of each year, they submit an annual report to EMO that Darren and I go through, and we take a look to make sure that the municipality has met those requirements. And then we provide some feedback on recommendations on not only how to improve, but enhance your programs as well. So that certainly takes up a, a big chunk of time, and again, we're always very happy to help. In addition to that, they're also looking to provide agreements and settling out what that may look like before an emergency happens, whether that's with neighboring municipalities, not-for-profits, NGO organizations, so that if and when something happens, your municipality is prepared. And that brings us to the response aspect. So the CEMC is really, comes from the lens of a liaison role. So their job is really to liaise not just within your municipality, but with neighboring municipalities, perhaps NGO organizations, and of course, Darren and I, when an emergency happens. Because we can be that conduit of information between the municipality and the province. The CEMC may also set up and operate the Emergency Operations Center. And a really key thing to note is that typically the CEMC is not the commander when it comes to an emergency. We'll typically see the CAO kind of fill that position from the control group perspective. But they're really there to help support the control group in that operations center in effectively responding to an emergency. Next slide, please. So up next is we have the Emergency Management Program Committee. So while the CEMC is responsible for the coordination of the development and implementation of the program, it's the program committee that's really there as that support mechanism for the CEMC. And as you can see on the slide, they have a bunch of responsibilities in that they're supporting the CEMC in that program, whether that's setting the objectives and strategies for the year. You know, what training activities are we wanting with our control group? Who else might, might we want to involve in training? What our exercise scenario may be? Are there any changes that we want to implement to our Emergency Operations Center or any changes to the plan? So they're working together very closely with the CEMC to help establish what these strategies and objectives are for the year. They help identify any resource capability gaps and recommend approaches to fill them. Because these are, the, the members that are on this committee are really members of your municipality who are subject matter experts in what your municipality has to offer to the program. They conduct an annual review of the program at the end of each year as a group to see, okay, did we meet those objectives? Do we meet those strategies? If we didn't, how can we improve next year? What are some of the changes that we can make? And they submit those amendments to the program through that report to council to yourselves so that you can see what some of those changes may be year after year. Mentioning the, the composition, under the framework, the CEMC and a senior elected official must be on the composition of the program committee. And we also look to make sure that there is a chair that's been adopted through, whether it's through the program bylaw or somewhere in the response plan to outline what that composition looks like and who the chair may be. When it comes to the program committee, it's not just within your municipality. You may also want to include some subject matter experts. So let's say, for example, through your hazard identification and risk assessment, you've identified a chemical industry. You may want to bring in a representative from that organization to help identify some kind of plan or whatever it may be to speak to that specific area of subject matter expertise. Next slide, please. So really, your role in emergency management, what the overarching expectation is, is that we want you to understand that there are annual requirements under the Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act. We want you to know who your local emergency management experts are. So if you have questions or if you want to be more involved, we encourage you to link in with your community emergency management coordinator and also directly through the Emergency Management Program Committee. They should be, they should know every line in the response plan. They should know what the expected actions will be, and they're really your guide and support when it comes to an emergency. And last but not least, we want you to consider the recommendations that come from the program committee, whether that's, you know, looking to make changes for the following year in terms of having a full-scale emergency exercise to really practice and exercise, not just the control group, but your local first response staff, maybe, maybe any supporting organizations that might be involved as well, any requests for funding, all of those things. Next slide, please.
All right. I get the chance to talk. We're going to take turns tonight. So I'm going to talk about the six pillars of preparedness, and you can see them on the slide here. And they're all based on the foundation of the HIRA, which is the Hazard Identification and Risk Assessment, which is unique to each municipality, really, because your municipality will have slightly different hazards than your neighbors might. Across those pillars of preparedness, we're going to break down each one of these. Include emergency plans, emergency operations centers, training, exercises, emergency information, and public information and public awareness. Next slide, please. So it's the emergency response plan, which is obviously central to your whole response program. The emergency response plan is established by the program committee, and it encompasses, it should be an all-encompassing document to describe how you're going to react to a bad thing that might happen. Of course, we never hope that a bad thing does happen, but you want to be well-prepared in case it is. It's based on that HIRA, that Hazard Identification and Risk Assessment, where every hazard that might face your municipality is graded. And typically, you have like a top 10 list of what are the highest risk hazards for your community. It outlines the roles and responsibilities of your municipal emergency control group. And those are the people that are going to respond or invite others to respond should a bad thing happen and staff up the emergency operations center. So these are your kind of staff or technical experts or NGO representatives, people that they might bring in to support them in the event of something going wrong. It details the command and control arrangements, including the identification of who's going to be the EOC commander in the emergency operations center, and though, who's in charge of which specific functions. And we can break that down a little bit more too. Next slide, please. The second pillar is your emergency operations center. And it's a space that's designated and designed specifically to respond to an emergency. It's usually a good idea for most municipalities to have a secondary EOC as well. And some municipalities take advantage of online abilities in order to have those meetings online. For example, if there was a bad snowstorm and you couldn't all come to the emergency operations center. Council's role is to really support that municipal emergency control group in the EOC through listening to their requests, offering funding, offering support, seeing what they need, making sure they have everything they need, and ensure that the EOC itself is prepared to support any response that might need to happen for those emergency management professions. Next slide, please. And then the third pillar is training. And you can see here, for those MECG members, it is a requirement that they complete annual training. And Holly and I take the time to check up on that through that annual compliance submission, including all of these aspects, including the emergency response plan, the critical infrastructure list. Every municipality has one, the hazard identification and risk assessment list, your activation for your MECG, and how do you, they get contacted and activated? And how do they stand up that emergency operations center? So who's going to unlock the door? Who's going to turn on the lights? Who's going to stage it and set it up and make sure all the bins are out and the binders are ready to go and everybody's ready? And that there's food and coffee and all those really important things that we need. And the EOC location, and that it has technological, technological support. So it's got all of the internet and backup and redundant systems power that it might need in the event of a bad thing happening. And that there are training courses to help support this, that Emergency Management Ontario provides and offers through the Incident Management System, which is a whole series of courses, and Basic Emergency Management or EM courses. Next slide, please. Our fourth pillar is exercises. So an annual exercise needs to be done every year in every municipality, so 444 across the province. And that has to at least be a tabletop exercise, but it can go into a large full-scale exercise. And we would encourage a variety of different exercises over different years. But core members of your MECG must participate to meet those But core members of your MECG must participate to meet those annual compliance requirements. And an after-action review of the exercise should be conducted. Considerations of how the exercise worked and what systems were tested and how did we perform? How did we do? And what can we do better? Next slide, please. Pillar number five is emergency information. And that typically is the head of council, who is the voice of the municipality. Giving that information to your constituents, making sure that people are well-informed of what they can do to protect themselves or what actions they shouldn't take. You should avoid the flooded area, you should stay home, you should turn off your HVAC. What is, what are the instructions that are going to keep people safe? Right now. And so in that event of an emergency, each municipality has to have a designated emergency information officer. And sometimes that's the head of council and sometimes it's not. But every person, every municipality has to have one of those. And council has a role in promoting that information and making sure they're sharing consistent messaging. So that's a really important thing for council to know is that when the municipality is releasing messaging, that we are sharing the same messaging, that we're all on the same page. We're singing from the same song sheet. And that's crucial for public confidence because we want to do what we can to keep our public safe, right? We're all public servants in one way or another. And the EIO, the Emergency Information Officer, supports that by developing the message based on crisis communication best practices. Next slide, please. The sixth pillar is public education and public awareness. So a program that provides regular public information. And we, that is part of your compliance program every year as well. That there are social media briefs, there's leaflets, there's inserts included in your tax bills, things like that to remind people of the importance of preparedness, the importance of having a seventy-two-hour kit, of being prepared when they're traveling, of having a blanket and a candle and everything in their car, all of those things. And also a lot of the fire safety things tie into that as well. So the Emergence Management Civil Protection Act is generally responsible to make sure that every municipality does this every year. And we would encourage you to have a wholesome and fulsome emergency public education and awareness information program. And council can support that through requests for funding when it comes to printed materials or advertisements or social media posts. And delivering and sharing that approved messaging that comes from your CEMC or your Emergency Management Program Committee. Next slide, please. And so I've talked on some of the pieces of council's role when it comes to being better prepared. So first of all, I would encourage you, your Emergency Response Plan is available in a public format, but be familiar with your own Emergency Response Plan and what it contains. Know well what hazards are in your own municipality. Know where your critical infrastructure is and how it's protected. Know your continuity of operations plan. That's your internal organization's response to an emergency or a bad thing happening. How are we going to make sure that staff can continue to do their jobs when the power goes out? How are we going to make sure that people can still receive services from the municipality when a bad thing happens? And then funding, consider wisely those funding requests that you get from your Emergency Management Program Committee for improvements to the Emergency Operations Centre or for public education events or for training events. And then encourage and support those annual exercises. As you have opportunity to learn and participate, seize those opportunities. And support the head of council when they are delivering messaging when it comes to some of those bad weather events. As they share messaging, make sure you're resharing those messages and promote that public education piece. Next slide, please.
So going back to those five components of comprehensive emergency management, the most popular being response. Because bad things do happen and we want to ensure that before we do response, we take every action that we can take to prevent, mitigate and be prepared for an emergency. Ultimately, at the end of the day, there are some things that we can't prevent or things that we can't control. We're only human beings. So we want to be prepared to respond to when those big bad things do happen. So again, response is the actions that we take during or after something has happened to be able to ensure that we're protecting our people, property, the environment, economy and the services that we're providing to our municipality. One thing I do want to note that when we're talking about responses in emergency management, we're not talking about your day-to-day nine-one-one for fire, police EMS. We're talking about those emergencies that occur that go beyond that local first responder capacity. So something that may be affecting the larger population as a whole or maybe requiring some additional resources beyond that fire, police, EMS and utility perspective. So please keep that in mind as we go through the next few slides. Next slide, please. So we talked previously about the role of the Emergency Management Program Committee. There's two different groups that operate under the emergency program that can sometimes get confused. So the program committee is that strategic oversight to the program. So helping prepare for an emergency. When you think about your municipal emergency control group, think of them as responders. So they're taking what the program committee and the CEMC has developed and implemented through the program and they're putting it into action once an emergency has occurred. So really their role is to coordinate with the on-scene incident commander and other organizations. And that's really to provide that strategic direction and priorities for the incident management objectives. They're acquiring, allocating and tracking resources for what may be needed on-site. Managing and sharing information internally and with the public. So taking that off the plate of the folks that are on the ground. And of course, last but not least, providing legal and financial support. So a key thing to remember is that your control group and the Emergency Operations Centre are really just an extension of what's happening on the ground, on the scene. They are not there to come in and take over from whatever command structure is taking place on the ground. They're really there to be that additional support mechanism to make sure that you're having an effective and successful emergency response. Another key thing to think about that from the control group lens is that they're taking that fifty thousand step-back approach. While the folks on the ground are responding to some of the primary priorities of saving people, protecting property, the environment, etc. The control group is taking that broader step-back to go, okay, well, we recognize that there's something happening on the scene, but how is that affecting the municipality as a whole? So they're taking in the lens of the continuity of operations perspective to make sure that if something's being affected, how is that being communicated to the public to make sure that whether that operation can continue to run? Or if it can't, making sure that people are aware and know that it can't and providing additional mechanisms maybe to help support in the meantime, if it may take longer than normal. Next slide, please. So Darren briefly talked about the role of the Emergency Information Officer already. But really the key focus of that individual's role is to collaborate with whoever's operating under the EOC command structure. We say section chiefs, but it's really your directors and managers that sit part of that control group and head of council. And that key role is to write and issue press releases, respond to medium public inquiries, monitors, media reports, reports on rumors and inaccuracies. That's really a big key one because in emergencies, we know if information isn't being provided, it's amazing where we can get different information from. So we want to make sure that we're getting information out there as fast as possible and addressing those rumors right off the bat so that there's no confusion, there's no misinformation amongst the citizens. They have a good awareness as to what's going on. Another key component that they do as well is that they're coordinating emergency, emergency information with all responding agencies. So there's that one key message across the emergency as a whole. We don't want to see one entity saying, well, the emergency is at place A, but another individual or organization is saying, well, the emergency is at place B. Then we've got confusion and we've got people potentially going to see things that they shouldn't be seeing and potentially hampering the operation on the ground. So having that one key message as a group certainly goes a long way. And of course, with the day and age of social media, part of a big part of their role is that monitoring and tracking of what's being said online. We oftentimes see in emergencies specifically during flooding that social media can be used if folks are trapped in their home. They might be putting on Facebook, hey, I live at this address, I'm looking for this support, this help. So that emergency information officer is really going to be key on taking back that critical information of what's being said from the public and taking it back to the control group, whether it's to adapt the operations or address the key messages at hand. Next slide, please. So council briefings and link to the control group. When an emergency happens, council's going to be briefed pretty regularly and depending on the size and scope of the emergency, that can be pretty frequently over the day. It may spread across every day over a week. It really just depends on the changing situation of the emergency. Common sources of where you may be getting your briefings from will probably typically come direct from the Emergency Information Officer, perhaps through your head of council or whoever the EOC commander is for the emergency incident. What we oftentimes see in some municipalities is that they'll have a policy group that council will sit within. And the head of council will act as that liaison between the control group and the policy group to share that information. And really your role as council is to take those key messages that are coming from the emergency information officer and sharing them with your constituents, helping share what's being done, what key actions are taken because there's probably going to be a lot of questions. So helping share that information is certainly be very. Next slide, please. So talking a little bit about the declaration of emergency. When it comes to declaring an emergency, head of council and or designated members of council can declare an emergency. So in your response plan, it will identify who those designated alternates can declare an emergency. So in the event that the head of council is unavailable, there is that additional contingency plan. When it comes to declaring an emergency, all declarations have to be shared to the Provincial Emergency Operations Centre. The POC will never deny or say that you cannot declare an emergency. They simply take the information and will likely have some follow-up questions in terms of what's going on and if you require any provincial assistance. We're always happy to help and always happy to be a support if and when you need it. When it comes to terminating an emergency, that can be done through head of council, council or through the premier. We'll note that there's never been an emergency in which the premier's had to come in, terminate an emergency, but that is an option as outlined in the act. So some things to think about when it comes to whether or not your municipality will declare an emergency. We certainly encourage and recommend that you give your friendly field officers a call. We're always happy to help talk you through the process and provide some, some feedback on maybe some considerations that you might have. And we do have a document that outlines some of the operational, reputational, economic, etc. considerations that you may want to make when it comes to why or why not your municipality may declare an emergency. So we're always happy to help be a source for support for that. But some of the benefits include providing exceptional means to deal with exceptional situations. So you might have measures outlined in your response plan, in your bylaws or through other emergency management-related legislation that may outline some additional measures that you may be able to take by declaring an emergency. One of the key aspects of that is it may open to additional resources, whether it's supplies or services. So we certainly saw during COVID that many municipalities declared an emergency because it opened up access to different procurement channels. So rather than having to go through their normal request for procurement process, they were easily able to access PPE, whatever they needed to be able to effectively respond to COVID nineteen at that time. So you may be able to do that. It helps protect volunteers, registered volunteers under WSIP. And it helps draw the public attention to the fact that there's an emergency. So it's you making a statement that you're aware and that you're doing something about it. It also helps to draw the seriousness to the situation as well. Next slide, please. So preparing for a declaration of emergency, there are templates available for a declaration form. Typically, how it happens is the control group will get together with the CEMC and the head of council and recommendations will made, considerations and that criteria that you may have outlined in your response plan or through your discussions on whether or not you may want to declare an emergency. If you do, there is a form that can be filled out and you may want to include some triggers on why you're declaring an emergency. And we say that because that then helps you to determine when you can effectively terminate the emergency. So for example, if you're saying we're declaring an emergency in the municipality of Central Elgin because road, critical roads X, Y and Z are no longer impassable and it's hampering emergency services. Now you've got criteria that you can go back to and say, well, roads X, Y and Z have now been cleared. We've got emergency services back up and running. We can now, as a group, determine whether it's appropriate to terminate the emergency or not. So having those triggers listed in the declaration can certainly be helpful in determining when it's appropriate to terminate your local emergency. Once that decision's been made, next comes the authorization. So head of council will fill out that declaration of emergency form. They'll sign it and it will be sent to the Provincial Emergency Operations Centre. That will then trigger some actions by the POC in terms of asking what's going on and what support can be provided if any. If you're not looking for any, that's fine too. It's just to keep that situational awareness of what's going on. In addition to that, not only do you want to update the Provincial Emergency Operations Centre, we want to make sure that your staff, council and any other municipalities within your neighboring jurisdiction are aware that the emergency is in place just for their own situational awareness. And most importantly, for that municipal control group, whether or not that's going to mean any additional actions in place. Next slide, please. So here's an example of what an incident response structure can look like. So an emergency occurs, you have your incident site. When it goes beyond that first level, first responder support, that's when the community EOC may be activated, the response plan may be activated and your control group is getting together to effectively make decisions and help support what's going on on the ground. Depending on your capacity and your resources, you may need additional resources as well, whether that's through supporting organizations, maybe through agreements with your neighboring municipalities or through the county or through nonprofit NGO organizations. There's always the support from the province as well, whether that's through ministry and federal partners. Two, and again, we strongly encourage if you need any, if you have any questions, contacting your local field officer. We're happy to help navigate what that process looks like when it comes to requests for assistance through the province. But you'll know off to the left-hand side is the elected officials group. And that's that policy group I had referred to earlier. So whether that's through your head of council is that liaison between the control group and the policy group that's feeding you the updates on what's happening, the key decisions that are being made, any actions that you may need to take as council and those key messages that you're then able to share with your constituents.
Holly, can I interrupt for a minute? How many more slides do we have left? Just because we had a late start tonight and we do have a very busy schedule. I'm just looking for a little bit of clarification. Okay, thank you so much.
And this is the last slide, sorry. So really your role in response is, oh, sorry, back one more. Thank you. Really your role in response is to maintain public confidence in the municipality and the efforts that are being undertaken, providing that feedback and questions you may be getting from your constituents and reporting that back to the control group. Helping to dispel some of the rumors and potential false information that's being shared. And if the control group needs anything in terms of approving policies or potential emergency expenditures, that might be something you may see as well. And that concludes our presentation. Sorry, we may have gone a little bit over time.
That's our four hours condensed into thirty-ish minutes.
We're happy to take any questions if you have any.
Thank you so much, Holly and Darren. I'd been a part of a couple of your courses and it's a lot of information to slide into a very condensed timeframe and it's really appreciated. Does anybody have any questions? Comments? Okay, I know we have full schedule, so thank you very much for coming out and I know we'll see you soon. Thank you. A adoption of the minutes? Can I get a mover and a seconder for minutes from? We don't have any minutes? Okay, Central Elgin Planning Office. CEP point six five point two six consent application. Are you speaking to this one, Kevin?
I can speak to this. Essentially, this application is a surplus farm severance application of note. I guess staff didn't have any concerns. It will be moved or forwarded off to the Elgin County Land Division Committee for final approval, but subject to their approval, it would be subject to a zoning bylaw amendment to deal with the surplus farm severance and the no dwelling on the retained part of the land.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions on this one? Anybody want to move that? Counselor Hoppin, Counselor Bachman.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the motion reads, move by Counselor Hoppin, seconded by Counselor Bachman. That report, CEP sixty-five twenty-three, be received for information. And that should council pass a resolution in support of consent application E ten twenty-four to the Land Division Committee. Staff recommends the following conditions. One, approval of a zoning bylaw amendment to prohibit residential dwellings on the retained lot and the deficient lot frontage for the severed lot be recognized. And two, that a copy of the reference plan be provided to the municipality of Central Elgin.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Oh. Mayor Sloan, did you have a question? Just delete. Okay. No. Okay. Our next application is C E P point zero one point two four, application for amendment to amend the Village of Belmont bylaw number ninety one twenty one, Plan three, three, M, six, five, eight, block thirty three, Belmont Glen Domage. Mr. McClure, are you speaking to this one, too?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yes, so this application was is a zoning bylaw amendment, subsequent site plan amendment would be required if the amendment does go forward, but the proposing is a sixteen unit developed residential development on the the property comprised of essentially two, two story residential dwellings. Each dwelling would be consist of eight units. So I believe it's more of an apartment, two story apartment type structure. But as I, again, the based on the comments that have been received so far from the county and through the consultation process, no concerns were raised.
Thank you, Mr. McClure. Any questions or comments? No? Do we have a mover and a seconder for this one? Counselor Bachman, Counselor Hoppin?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the motion reads, move by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Counselor Hoppin. That report C E P one twenty four be received and that direction be given by council to prepare a site specific draft amendment to the Village of Belmont zoning by law for proposed residential use on lands which may be legally described as Plan thirty three M six, five, eight, block thirty three in the municipality of Central Elgin. And further, that a date for a public meeting be established in accordance with Ontario Regulation five forty five oh six as amended.
Just verifying there's no questions on this one? Okay, all those in favor? That motion's carried? And moving on to C E P point zero two point two four. Mr. McClure?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This is the application I noted in the public meeting that was referred or related to the minor variance. Severance is occurring between the two properties and it's to facilitate new single attached residential dwelling along Lawton Street.
Anybody have any questions on this one? Mover, anybody want to move that? Counselor Watson, Counselor Connors? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? And C E P point zero three point two four, Mr. McClure?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So this application is an expansion to the Belmont farm supply property. Ultimately, the rear portion of the property that they're looking to develop on was divested by the municipality a number of years ago now. It was part of the community center to the to the to the north. The designation on the property and the zoning requires amendments. So they're going through the process. Again, it would be subject to site plan control in the future, should it be approved. But through the process and the supporting materials that were provided, again, staff didn't have any comments or concerns with this application.
Thank you, Mr. McClure. Does anybody have any questions on this one? Mover and a seconder for this? Mr. Bachman, or Counselor Bachman, sorry, Counselor Watson? All those in favor? Oh. That motion's carried? Mayor Sloan, just to, we'll call that vote again. All those in favor? That motion's carried? And moving on to C E P point zero four point two four, Mr. McClure?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So this application is a zoning bylaw amendment for the property that's municipally addressed as one fifty six Mod Street. Through the consultation process and confirmed through a legal opinion letter by their lawyer. The parcel itself is comprised of three historically, like I said, historic parcels are part of a plan of subdivision. Ultimately, the intent is to now have a rezoning to facilitate residential uses on each of those parcels. Similar to the lot structure and what's been approved in the past. Essentially, the zoning would provide setbacks from the property lines that were satisfactory to the the planning department and was been approved in the past. But also accommodate for off street parking, which has been an issue on Mod Street. There's, there are particular engineering details that are currently being worked out, but nothing that raised any concerns from staff perspective to advance the zoning bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. McClure. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this one? No? Is there a mover and a seconder for this motion? Counselor Hoppin, Counselor Watson? And Mayor Sloan, did you have your hand up for a question or? Okay. All those in favor? Not sure that we understood that. Mayor?
First of all, I was just I don't know.
There you are.
I apologize if you can't hear me. Thank you for your indulgence. I was just offering to second it, but a seconder came through. So I will just give my hand up, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Sloan. All those in favor? That motion carries. Moving on to Director of Infrastructure and Community Services, municipality of Central Elgin Water and Wastewater Rate Study. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As council is aware, the municipality has engaged Watson and Associates to prepare a financial plan for the water and wastewater systems. As part of that financial plan, a rate study has been undertaken and Byron Tan from Watson and Associates is here to present the findings of the rate study.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Welcome, Byron.
Good evening, members of council, staff and members of the public. Thank you, Mr. Brooks, for introducing me. So I'm here today to provide you with a presentation for the municipality's water and wastewater rate study and the financial plan. I'll just be walking through, you know, some of the summary and the findings that we went through over the past few months in, you know, providing the calculations, the assumptions that went into the study, and then as well, ultimately, the rates that were part of the study process. Next slide. So just to start, I mean, I'll provide you with a little bit of a background. So obviously, tonight, we will go through, again, the study process throughout the presentation and feel free to ask any questions. Although I do find that most of the questions really is a segue into a following slide. So feel free if you do have a question that's pressing, more than happy to answer it. If not, I'm also available to answer it at the end of the presentation. With that being said, you know, the presentation will touch upon a number of items. I'll overview the legislation that we did utilize as part of the rate setting process. We'll also go through the, some of the existing items that you do have as part of the municipality. So we'll go through your existing rates, existing customers. And then we'll go into the assumptions, as I mentioned, that went into the calculations, such as the capital, operating, life cycle, et cetera. And then we've also prepared the rates and then a survey of where you stand in terms of your average billing relative to some of your peers. Next slide. So as I mentioned, the rate study, it is a collaborative approach between staff and committee members that were part of the process. We did discuss this over the past few months and we identified a lot of the capital operating as well as any other potential inputs that went into the calculations. So what you will, what I'll be presenting to you tonight includes water and wastewater. A lot of the items here were meant to recover the capital costs, especially within the budgets that have been presented to council and may have been, you know, through your budgeting process. And the point of the study is to be able to identify the revenues in order to meet your capital and operating requirements. So that's the purpose of the, both the rate study and financial plan. Next slide. So in terms of the legislation, you know, the principles within the rate studies is really to look at full cost recovery. And if you take a look at the legislation since Walkerton, there's been a lot of items that have been discussed through the province and stakeholders in order to determine what would be a sustainable rate as well as management of your water and wastewater systems. So that stemmed from the Safe Drinking Water Act, which was in the early two thousands. And then from there, a slew of other, you know, legislation came about in order to help govern and as well provide best practices as to how to determine rates as well as manage a water or wastewater system. So that came in the form of the Sustainable Water and Sewage Systems Act. Now, the principles within there actually help guide the the rate setting process. However, eventually that act was repealed and then subsequently the Water Opportunities Act and the Clean Water Act came about in order to provide, you know, guidance as to, you know, financial plans, sustainability plans, and even incorporating asset management plans as part of the the rate setting process. And that was through the municipal infrastructure strategy and the Infrastructure for Jobs and Prosperity Act, where, which really governed your asset management, you know, needs, processes, and all of the, you know, the criteria that you needed to meet, you need to meet essentially by twenty twenty five. Next slide. So with that being said, you know, before we can even go and calculate the rates, we first need to take a look at where do you start? So right now, your existing rates, you do have two separate rates, one being your fixed charge, which typically is the, what we call a base charge. So these charges are imposed to customers regardless of whether they utilize water or wastewater. So this assists with the municipality to be able to recoup any fixed expenditures without being at the mercy of trying to figure out, you know, how much volumes are utilized at any given point. You do break it out by the different meter sizes for water. For wastewater, you do have one joint charge for regardless of meter size. In addition to that, you also have your volume rates. So this is governed by the meters that are at the customers' homes or businesses. And this measures the the quantity of water that's utilized. And obviously, what the name suggests, it measures the number of volumes. Hence, you multiply that by these volume rates. And again, you do have one for water and another one for wastewater. Now typically, you don't have a meter for wastewater. So any volumes that are identified through the water side really is what is the basis on the wastewater. Next slide. In terms of customers, you do have about four thousand, just under four thousand, six hundred water customers and about thirty eight, just under thirty nine hundred wastewater customers. Now, I would like to point out that although you do have, you know, quite a bit of customers within the municipality, you do have a subset of these customers that are serviced by other systems. You have about three different secondary systems that service the, you know, the the water customers and wastewater, and then you also have the primary system with Elgin. So while you do have, you know, one charge, we do have to look at everything in terms of purchase services from these other systems. Next slide. So when we take this information as a starting point, we then take a look at the growth forecasts and that would be, you know, seen, observed within the municipality over this ten year forecast period. And we worked with staff to take a look at, you know, what are the trends and what kind of building permits, you know, would occur over the next ten years? And some of the documents that we would utilize as well is your development charge background study, which would have a summary of developments over this ten year period. So what you're seeing on the screen, and I apologize for the the size of it, is a is a forecast of your existing customers and then how many customers will be added on over the ten year period. And as you can see there, we started off, again, if you recall, around forty five hundred water customers. And then you will see that we're adding, you know, roughly, I believe it's about a hundred per year until we get to about five thousand, four hundred to the end of the forecast. So this, and then with that being said, we also then assume a volume for each one. So having taken a look at historical data for your residential customers as well as non-res, we have determined that an average of about a hundred and forty cubic meters per year is typically what a residential customer would, you know, consume. And therefore, that's what we utilize as well for the volume forecast over this time period. Next slide. Similarly, with wastewater, again, we do have a similar forecast. Now, we're assuming that all new customers within the municipality will be serviced with water and wastewater. So we won't, we don't really have any instances where, you know, it'll only be a water customer or just a wastewater. We assume that for most of the customers, or if not all of them, they would be serviced with both water and wastewater. And again, using that one hundred and forty cubic meters per year, we go from four hundred and eighty seven thousand cubic meters in twenty twenty three up to just over six hundred thousand cubic meters available volumes by twenty thirty three. Next slide. So in terms of the capital infrastructure, as we were going through the analysis for the rate study, we worked with staff in the municipality to determine the capital needs that would go into the ten year forecast. So most of the items came from your ten year budget. We also took a look at your development charge study because it does have a number of works that are growth related, but there are components of it that aren't a hundred percent growth. And if it's not a hundred percent growth, then those costs would not be recovered from development charges, but they would have to be recovered from your water or wastewater rates. Additionally, we also took a look at your asset management plan. So you you did undertake an asset management plan for your core assets back in two thousand and twenty two. And it took a look at, you know, the amount of spending and the works that would have to be replaced over the next, you know, ten to twenty years. So we took a look at the water and wastewater and included that as part of the analysis as well. And then with all that information, we broke out, you know, the needs, the timing of each one so that we could slot which year these capital projects would be incurred. And then obviously, we took a look at the costs and over the forecast period, we do inflate the costs because everything would be in twenty twenty three dollars. So we took, or twenty twenty four, I should say, and so we do take a look at how would you pay for these items over the forecast if it was in, if it was inflated annually. Additionally, as well, you know, in not only by looking at the first ten years, but we also take a look at what type of capital would the municipality have to incur outside this ten year forecast? So while not part of the the rate study and the analysis per se, we do have to take a look at, you know, what is happening outside of the parameters of the study. So with that being said, and we'll show, I'll show that in a subsequent slide, you do have quite a bit of works that would fall outside this ten year forecast. As such, we started building up your reserve funds to be able to, you know, start saving for per se and pay for these works in the future while minimizing any debt or any of the ventures that you may have to incur during those times. Next slide. or any of the ventures that you may have to incur during those times. Next slide. So what you're seeing on the screen here is just a summary of the capital projects that have been identified through the process. I'm not going to go line by line, you know, this will be presented, you, you do have this in front of you and will be documented in a final report. But essentially, looking at the 10-year forecast inflated, we're looking at about a water capital program of about $12 million. Now, of this amount, there are some of these projects that are DC eligible. So this does show you the full gambit of capital that would be for water, but there are components of this list that would be funded from development charges. Next slide. And then similarly for the wastewater, it's also captured here for your review. This is slightly less than the water capital list, but it, so, but it is just under $12 million, 11.7. And again, similar to water, there are components of this list that also include development charge funded assets. Next slide. So now that we've determined the capital program that the municipality is looking to fund over the next 10 years, we then worked and tried to figure out, well, what is the best way to actually finance these items? So we took a look at utilizing reserves. And through the reserves, actually, we also do operating budget transfers. So while not doing, so while not transferring directly from your rates straight to the capital, we do put the money within the reserve. So at the, when the time comes of funding these capital items, you'll have the monies in the reserve funds to be able to pay for these segments at those times. Additionally, there were some grants that were identified through this process, so that's been also applied to the capital program. And as I mentioned earlier, development charges as well. Now, I'd just like to point out that, you know, we do have a couple of items there that aren't checked off, you know, with the municipal act. I mean, typically, if you did have any properties, you know, that, let's say we're on private servicing and would pay for, and would be hooked, hooking up in the future, they would pay, they can't pay a development charge because they're not a new unit, they're still an existing unit. But you could have municipal act charges that mirror DCs in order to pay for growth-related works. But we haven't assumed any of that in this analysis. Additionally, with the rate study, we also, you know, reduced or actually eliminated any need for new debt. So that's why the rates that are presented to you tonight actually do not include any additional debt moving forward. Next slide. So what you're seeing in front of you right now at the starting point are your existing reserve funds as of the end of last year. As you can see, for, for water, you do have just under a million dollars within your water reserve fund. And you do have a deficit within the development charge reserve, but that's most likely a function of, again, having to pay for assets ahead of time because you don't get development charges until a building permit is pulled. So, you know, that's more of a, you're just financing that until that development comes through the door. With respect to wastewater is a little bit healthier. You do have about just under 1.4 million dollars on your general reserve. You have about just a quarter of a million dollars on the DCs. And then you have also a connection charge reserve fund as well, you know, for new connections on the wastewater side. And that'll actually be utilized for financing as well for some of your wastewater projects. Next slide. So this slide provides a summary of the proposed financing for that 12 and 11 million dollar works for the water and wastewater respectively. As you can see on the water side, you know, we are utilizing some of the grants, about 884,000 of that would be for most likely your water meters that you'll be. And then as well, we also identified about 2.2 million coming from DCs. And then the remainder, $9 million will be coming from your rates via your reserve funds. Similarly with wastewater, again, you can see, again, six, just under $7 million from development charges. Again, you're, you're seeing that connection charge revenue of about 781. And then just over $4 million from your wastewater reserve, again, through your wastewater rates. Next slide. So just to provide you just a little bit of background with respect to your life cycle and asset management works, you know, your system does date back to the 1950s for water and 1970s for wastewater. So your wastewater is fairly new relative to your water infrastructure. When you break this down, the total value of your water infrastructure, based on your TCA data, is about $70 million. With wastewater, it's a little bit more, you're about 100, almost $131 million. When you take a look at this from a per customer basis, if you recall, you have about 4,500, you know, water customers and 3,800 wastewater customers. That translates to about an investment of about $15,000 per customer for water and 33,700 for wastewater. So when you take a look of that, I mean, the municipality has, you know, invested a lot of money in order to maintain and add to your water and wastewater infrastructure. And this table at the bottom here just goes to show that, you know, of that amount, that 201 million total dollars worth of infrastructure, based on just age of the assets, you should be replacing about $3.6 million over this 10-year forecast. However, through working with staff and, you know, looking at your infrastructure, you are being more proactive. So what we've included is roughly about 12.6 million because of the assessments and actually taking a look at what is coming through the pipeline of what needs to be replaced. So with that being said, I mean, we, we believe that, you know, this capital plan that you have in front of you does support, you know, the capital needs that the municipality will experience over the next 10 years. Next slide. Just wanted to show you again, you know, extending from just the 10-year forecast, we wanted to see all of your assets more, you know, graphically. And you'll see this bar chart, and I apologize, it's very small, but you'll understand why I kept the, the Y axis where it is at that $30 million mark. But if you're looking at water, most of your assets are fairly spread out. So you, you started building over time. So you don't have any one asset that is essentially having to be replaced all in one year. So again, staff have done a great job to make sure that, you know, all of your assets are taken care of, you know, through the water and wastewater review. And that, so therefore, in terms of the water side, really, you're probably averaging about, you know, say about $2 to $3 million per year of an investment in order to take care of your water system moving forward. However, next slide, if you take a look at the water side, this is where I say, you know, with a new system, there's more, there's a lot of items that'll be coming due post the 10-year forecast. So as you can see, by the time you get to about, you know, the mid 2040s, you'll have roughly over $20 million of assets that are potentially going to come due. So and then from there, you know, as you move forward, you know, you have some years again, which is, you know, roughly around six, seven million. And then again, you know, once you get to the 2080s, then, you know, you'll be back up to that, you know, $27 million. Now, while this does seem like it is a long-term view, you have to recognize that these are all in today's dollars. So, you know, at the end of the day, you know, once you're looking at this, you know, 20 to 50 years from now, this 20 to $30 marks, you know, could be double, triple, again, not sure where inflation may land. But this is something that you have to be mindful of and start saving over time. And that's why we've developed the, the rate study to be able to put these monies into your reserve funds to be able to minimize any debt in the future to handle these, you know, these capital works should they come about. Next slide. Now, in terms of the operating budget, you know, we did work with staff to take a look at, you know, what would be required over the 10-year forecast. And recognizing that, you know, nothing is stagnant, there is inflationary factors on every given year. So with that being said, we applied a few of the inflations, inflationary factors depending on the type of operating costs. Where we're noticing more utilities, chemicals, hydro, gasoline, propane, et cetera, we typically see that inflating higher than, you know, your traditional inflation rate. You can see that at the pump, you could see that probably in your power bill. So for the, for the rate study, we've assumed a 7% increase per year just for those type of line items. Now, for all other operating expenditures, we're assuming 4% per year over the 10-year forecast. Again, we'll monitor this over the coming years, but right now, given inflation, interest rates, we feel that we are pretty comfortable with the 4%, you know, for the operating budget. Next slide. Now, just, this just provides you with a summary of how the operating budget is increasing over the next 10 years. You could see in the blue there, that's your pure operating costs. So that also includes all of the purchases that you would have to undertake with your partners, you know, with those secondary systems, you know, the Port Burwell, St. Thomas, Almer, and then as well Elgin, the Elgin primary. So that's the blue that you're seeing there where it's increasing over that 10-year forecast. The next line is that red or burgundy, and that's actually your debt payments. So as you can see, over time, you know, we do have, you know, quite a bit of debt that we're still paying off in the first few years. But then come 2026, 2027, a lot of that debt actually, you know, matures and comes off the books. So what you're seeing there post 2027, 28 is just the remaining amounts of your debt payments for water. And then the orange there is the reserve fund transfers that are going towards your capital. So while not all of that funding is there at the end of the day, a lot of these, a lot of the oranges in the, the first few years is actually to help pay for your capital. And then the remainder of it after paying for your capital program is then the remaining balance within your reserve funds. Next slide. A similar example with wastewater, again, again, with 2024, you know, we're starting off at about 4.4 million and as I said, with the colors, the blue being your pure operating, red being your, red burgundy being your debt, and then orange being your reserve fund transfers. Next slide. I apologize for the, you know, the, the size here, but essentially this sheet provides you with the rate summaries, which is essentially the punchline at the end of the day. As you can see, I'll start off at the top with water. As of right now, based on a, your existing rates of $36.19 for the fixed charge, you know, coupled with your volume rates of about $3.19, a typical customer consuming 140 cubic meters of water will typically have an average annual bill of about $880 on the water side. Similarly with wastewater, again, with using 140 cubic meters for your volumes, they would roughly be at about $890 per year on the wastewater. For a total combined, as you can see at the bottom there, of $1,770. What the rate study has undertaken was, again, use, while minimizing all debt, is to propose a 4% increase on the base charges for both water and wastewater. And for the volume rates for water, it's actually, we require a 5% increase for the first two years and then 4% thereafter. That's just because a lot of your capital is actually front-ended in 2024 and 2025. So again, to minimize debt or not have debt at all, we just need this additional increase in the first two years to be able to, you know, not incur any more debt payments for the municipality. With, if you're looking at it from an annual basis, that probably translates to about a $40 increase on the water bill for the first year. And on average, over the 10-year forecast, it's about a $44 per year average. Similarly with wastewater, again, you know, we're at 4% per year on the base charges. But unlike water, where we're doing 5% and 4% thereafter, we were actually able to maintain a 0% increase on your wastewater rates. And that's actually consistent with what you've passed historically over the past three or four years, maintaining it at a constant rate. So we were able to finance the capital program by only increasing the base charge, but keeping the volume rates constant. And at the end of the day, that translates to an average of about a $23 increase per year on the wastewater side. So when you're looking at the combined water and wastewater bill, that's an average of about $65 to $67 per year increase over the 10-year period. Yes.
Thank you, through you Deputy Mayor. So hypothetically, is it necessary to increase the base instead of the volume? Or could you keep the base rate at 0% and increase the volume so that people who are using less water can save money?
Through the mayor, that's a great question. Yes, we can, you know, have, we have the flexibility to increase the base or the volume. We just, you know, through working with staff, we ran a few scenarios and this was the one that was to be recommended to council, you know, for tonight. However, if there are any other items that, you know, you'd like us to take a look at, I'd be happy to work with staff and, you know, take a look at that. Okay. So that's again, the rate summaries. And again, this is based on 140 cubic meters per year. Again, this would fluctuate depending on utilization. And if we go to the next slide, just lastly on the rate study, and then I'll touch upon the financial plans in a moment. Just wanted to provide you a comparison of your residential, you know, water and wastewater bill as opposed to, you know, compare it to some of your peers. So as you can see right now, I mean, you know, taking a look at some of these municipalities, you know, Malahide being, you know, the most expensive one here on the far left-hand side, their combined bill, looking at 140 cubic meters per year, is basically around $2,300 per customer. And then going down the list, you still have Dudd and Dunwich, you know, that's about 2,200. Bayham, if you're in Richmond area, you're just under $2,000. And then you could see yourselves, you're right there, basically fourth and fifth, you know, with this increase for 2024, you're still in the same position as your other peers. And then, you know, underneath you again, you know, Tem Center, you know, South Wall, Middlesex Center. Now, I would just like to caveat as well and footnote that although, you know, you may, you know, you may see this graph, you know, and say, okay, well, this is where we are amongst your peers, you also have to recognize that you are also different than them as well in terms of what your capital plan is, what, how many customers you have relative to their customers, your system being unique, having, you know, separate areas, you know, being serviced by different secondary systems. So at the end of the day, while we do have this up, you know, you just have to keep in mind that every system is unique at the end. Next slide. So that's the rate study side. I just want to touch, I just want to spend about a few minutes just talking about the financial plan. As part of this process, we will be providing the municipality with a document that you are able to submit to the province in order to renew your water license. Next slide. So just to provide you with an overview, you know, as part of the water and wastewater financial plans, in order to, in order to renew your license, you must follow these, you know, these five requirements to obtain your drinking water license. So, you know, through staff, you'll be submitting your drinking water permits, your DWQMS, which is your operational plan, your accreditation of your operating authority, and then, you know, the permit to take water application as well. And what we're providing you is the number four, the financial plan. Next slide. So as part of the financial plan, so this is under the Safe Drinking Water Act. And, you know, this actually just provides you with a summary of, you know, your financial position, you know, with respect to your assets and infrastructure. So, you know, all municipalities are required to submit a financial plan as part of their licensing, you know, agreements. And as I mentioned, the rate study will actually form the basis of the financial plan. So again, if there are any changes to any of the capital, the rates, et cetera, obviously, that would impact the financial plan as well. So we are waiting for approval for council before we even, you know, finalize this process. Next slide. So just to provide you just some quick background, you know, the financial plan requirements under OREG 45307, it is mandatory that you undertake this every five years. The requirements of the plan actually are, are pretty straightforward. The plan must provide, you know, certain financial indicators that the municipality, you know, is undertaking over the next, you know, forecast period. And the financial plan actually is a minimum of six years in terms of a forward forecast. Now, with the rate study going out to 10 years, we've more than exceeded that requirement. You know, one of the things, it is an accounting exercise. So while the rate study guides what you will be imposing in terms of rates to your customers, the financial plan is more a document just to ensure that, you know, your surpluses are, you know, in line. What is, what is your net debt, you know, deferred revenues from development charges? So it's just meant to be an accounting document just to supplement the, the rate study. Next slide. So as I mentioned, at the end of the day, you know, the reporting is mandatory for water, but it is optional for wastewater. Now, through discussions with staff and what you've done historically, you typically submit both the water and wastewater. So we will be providing you one document, but does have the breakdown of both the water and wastewater financial plan. So one of the things here, again, it is submitted as part of that application and there'll be a number of recommendations within that. and there'll be a number of recommendations within that, um, financial plan and the, the reporting bodies that you have to submit the application to. Next slide. So one of the things, um, just to provide you some context, the rate study is done on a modified cash basis. So what this means is, you know, this is actually your operating cash, your capital, like, so actual dollars that you'll be utilizing, uh, you know, for budgeting purposes. What, what the province requires from the financial plan is to look at everything from a full accrual basis. So what we have to do is, again, take the information from the, from the rate study, convert it all to an accrual basis, amortization basis, et cetera, and that forms a financial plan. So what I recommend to, uh, you know, municipalities at the end of the day is, when you're budgeting, always look at the rate study because that actually does coincide with your capital budget, your operating, et cetera. The financial plan again is more on the surpluses and reporting of the financial health of the municipality. So it, it's not really the document that you would use to base the rates on. So that would be from the rate side. Financial plan is really just to, uh, to meet the criteria of the, uh, province and the drinking water application. Next slide. So that concludes my presentation. Um, we do have some recommendations for council, um, or sorry, uh, some counts for, uh, items for council's consideration. Uh, we had prepared the capital program for you, um, you know, so if you could consider the capital program, consider the operating program, the proposed rates that are presented in front of you, and based on, um, you know, your direction, we could then finalize, uh, not only the rate study report, but also the financial plans for submission to the province. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Tam. Does anybody have any questions with respect to this report? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to CS. Uh, point 02, point 24. Drain petition. Mr. Brooks, are you speaking to this? Oh. Okay. Can I have a mover and a seconder to receive? Uh, Mr. Tan's report? Counselor Hupin, Counselor Bachman? All those in favor? Carried. Okay. Uh, now moving on to ICS 0224. Mr. Brooks?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. We actually have Alex Pigott, uh, manager of environmental services to just provide a brief overview of this one.
Welcome, Alex.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This report is just a simple report to lift a one-foot reserve from the, uh, um, Ashford Street, make it a public highway. So we're just looking forward to council passing the bylaw for, for that, uh, for that, and then we can proceed to make that a, a, a public highway, and then developer can start to build, uh, houses and, uh, obtain building permits and sell the houses.
Mr. Brooks?
And just to add to that, there is a bylaw on the council agenda here. Um, so, uh, lifting the, lifting the reserve, uh, would be done through, uh, passing of the bylaw.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we need a mover and a seconder for this? Counselor Bachman, Counselor Watson?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you to council, I will just, uh, clarify to council that this is ICS 324 that we're considering at this time. Um, we'll just go back and do 224 after this vote. Uh, moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Counselor Watson, that report ICS 324 be received, and the council approved by law 2855 to make the point 30 meter reserve a public highway.
All those in favor? Mayor Sloan? We can't see you. I just didn't know if you're voting for that.
For.
Can you say that again?
In favor, that's for me, sorry.
Thank you. Okay, we'll call the vote.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Hupin? Counselor?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bach?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan? That's carried, thank you.
Okay. Uh, we'll move back to ICS 224. Um, who's speaking to this? Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry to bring this up. Um, the purpose of the report, uh, here is to appoint Brandon Widner of Street Associates to prepare a report under section 4 of the Drainage Act. A petition was submitted by Ted, uh, Cheek, for an outlet at his property at 8415 Hobson.
Is there a mover and a seconder for this? Counselor Bachman, Counselor Hupin?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Counselor Hupin, that the council of the corporation of the municipality of Central Elgin appoint Brandon Widner, P. Eng, of Street Associates Limited to prepare a report under section 4 of the Drainage Act for the Chick Drain.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Moving on, Director of Financial Services, Treasurer, uh, DFS 324. Mr. Erstall?
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor Noble. Um, I don't have any additional information about to add to my report, but I'll take questions if there are any.
Does anybody have any questions to this? Seeing none, is there a mover and a seconder for this? Counselor Hupin? Counselor Watson?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Hupin, seconded by Counselor Watson, that the council of the corporation of the municipality of Central Elgin approve the transfer of $963,286.90 to the fire vehicle and equipment reserve for the budget year 2023.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Uh, Director of Fire Rescue Services? Chief Omerod?
Deputy Mayor, unless there are questions. Um, there's nothing add to the report with the exception of, you'll notice the grand total on the bottom for the year 2023 has the asterix of 885. That does not include approximately 50 calls that the lifeguards did perform this year, as has been discussed previously with that asterix. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Sure, a mover and a seconder for the, uh, monthly alarm activity? Counselor Hupin, Counselor Connors?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Hupin, seconded by Counselor Connors, that report FS 124 regarding monthly alarm activities report, December 2023, be received for information.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Director of Asset Management and Development Services, uh, AMDS 224. Um, monthly bylaw report. Anybody have any questions on that? Can I get a mover and a seconder to? Counselor Watson, Counselor Bachman?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that report AMDS 224 regarding December 2023 monthly bylaw report be received for information.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Moving on to bylaws. Okay, bylaw 2855, bylaw to assume Axford, Ashford Street, sorry, as part of the public highway. Um, read it a first and second time. I guess we need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Hupin, Counselor Watson?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Hupin, seconded by Counselor Watson, that bylaw 2855 be read a first and second time.
All those in favor? Mayor Sloan, are you, did we lose you?
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Hupin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Con?
Yes. Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried, thank you.
Okay, bylaw 2855 be read a third time and finally passed. Can we get a mover and a seconder? Counselor Connors, Counselor Hupin? Call the vote.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Hupin?
Yes.
Counselor?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
Yeah.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yeah.
Mayor Sloan? That's carried, thank you.
Can I get a mover and a seconder for bylaw 2857? Counselor Hupin, Counselor Connors? And that'll be read a first and second time?
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Hupin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan? That's carried, thank you.
Okay, other business. Uh, Port Stanley 200 Committee? Somebody want to speak to this one?
Uh, so at this point, we're putting forth a motion that the Central Elgin Council approved Port Toberfest, October 4th and 5th in 2024, uh, Port Street Party, June 15th, 2024, and Canada Day, Friday, July 1st, and Saturday, July 2nd, 2024, as municipally significant events, so that we can move forward with fundraising and program planning.
Okay. Um, I'm just, my one question is, um, should this go through our special events committee? Just for clarification and, and, uh, typically, a lot of these things go through our special events, and it, then it gives staff an opportunity to ask any questions and get clarification on stuff. Counselor Graham?
So in consultation with, uh, four other municipalities, it will go through special events, but it, it needs to be municipally significant events to allow for it, or not to allow for it, but then the next step would be the special events. Uh, forms being filled out and all that, but the designation itself is required for us to move forward with those celebrations and those specific dates or, um, events, sorry.
Right, I'm gonna look to Ms. Greenall for clarification.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, so the designation of a special, municipally special event is support for the Alcohol Gaming Commission. And, uh, for council's awareness, we, we just recently reviewed that process in order to support an event that occurred in, in Belmont. And so the council does not need to give a motion, that, that letter of support can come through the CAO by delegated authority. And we're certainly willing to, to write those letters once we are aware of the dates and the events themselves, so that we can provide that letter, and that is, uh, in, to support the application for, for the AGCO.
Hmm, can I, why, can I speak, please?
Sure, go ahead, Mayor Sloan.
Sorry about that. I had to move because it didn't look like my, I was getting some complaints about my internet. Firstly, I digress to say thank you for letting me be off-site this evening. It's difficult and use of technology is not always easy. So I appreciate your, your giving me the opportunity to do this. I apologize for any of the constraints that are associated with it, including me having to drive down the street to find internet access. I digress. We had a meeting last week in a successful event, uh, at the Fire Hall in Port Stanley. Ward 1 Counselor, the Deputy Mayor, myself, and the Volunteer Committee were there. Um, I think there's a lot of excitement for Port 200. And I think at the end of the day, the people of Port Stanley are looking at Central Elgin, not for any financial support. They're looking at them to give them a bit of support, like Elgin County did when it said, hey, let's put someone on the committee that we can put in from tourism, to show a little bit of interest in something, which I think is quite important to this community. Um, the many people that live in Port Stanley, as, as well as those that visit it, would understand that this council would have an interest, and I think an obligation to highlight a 200-year anniversary of one of our communities, as we would do if it was New Sarum, Sarada, Belmont Union, or other hamlets that are in within Central Elgin. It's not just a technicality for me that the Ontario Alcohol and Gaming Board require for the events that the Volunteer Committee have put forward, a letter which has to be, uh, a letter which requires that it be mandated a municipally significant event. That's all I ask for, folks, a municipally significant event. And I was in transit. I don't know if there's a motion on the table. Deputy Mayor, is there?
No.
I would like to put forward a motion that the two events, Canada Day, Port Stanley 200, and the Port Toberfest be deemed municipally significant events and municipally significant events. Do I, I'll defer to you, uh, Chair, if you can find a seconder, please.
Counselor Graham, are you second?
I second that motion.
All right. Counselor Halpin?
Thanks through you, Mr. Chair. I do just want, before we vote on this, to really, really clarify whether what we are offering is moral and conceptual support or anything else, because I am really finding at this point that we have this trend where we always say it's only going to be moral support, and it always ends up being financial support as well. And yet, it doesn't go both ways, right? It's great to say we would do the same for Sparta or Belmont, but the truth is, we won't do flower baskets for Sparta or Belmont, right? We won't do those things for other places. And we are cutting services right now to try and keep our budget down. I've got people complaining to me that they can't do biweekly payments right now because we're trying to reduce the amount of work that our customer service staff have to do. And I think that it's great if we can do that, but if we find ourselves devoting staff time to a Port Stanley project and those staff are being paid, then there does come a point where, no matter what we say we are doing that we would do for anyone else, we are disproportionately putting taxpayer money into wages that are going to Port Stanley. So what I want to clarify here is, is this one letter written once, and we don't come back to it, and Port can take care of doing this celebration? Or is this going to be a thing where we're going to suddenly be dumping money into studies and efforts?
Mayor Sloan?
Call the vote, please.
Counselor Graham?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, just to, in response to Counselor Halpin's question, it is just the declaration itself, and that is the end.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Counselor Graham.
I guess I'm looking for a little bit of clarification as to what we're doing. I, like, I understand. What was the motion? Sorry. It's a significant event. Declare a significant event. And I'm just, I'm missing part of it because all of a sudden, there's a liquor element to. So is the Port two hundred group, they're getting the liquor licenses themselves, or is this something that's coming through Central Elgin? I just, I feel like I'm losing a little bit of the, the, the flow of it. Counselor Graham?
There's no responsibility on the part of council or the municipality for obtaining any liquor license or things like that. We're doing all the organizing as the committee. We're doing all the fundraising. We're doing all the volunteers. We're doing all that work.
So by us making it a significant event, that's, it's just like a declaration? And that's it? There's nothing else that we're requiring, or are we going to need a staff report that brings something back to us? Or this is a significant event, and I'm just trying to understand what that does for the group, the Port two hundred group?
So there's nothing, there's no staff report that's needed? There's no, none of the things that you itemized? What it does is it, for lack of a better way of putting it, it greases the wheels so that we are able to move forward on different fronts of things that we need as a committee to facilitate the celebrations of those three significant events?
Okay, so for clarification, at what point does that come back to the Special Events Committee for approval? And then, and then those events come back to this council to, to vote and approve?
So the, I believe the Portoberfest is already in front of the special events. I believe you sit on the special events, don't you?
I do. And, and we were working through that process, and this is where I'm, I'm just kind of looking at it going, we, we do have a group, and we do have a process that, that works very well with, with everybody in staff, and, and we make sure that the, the groups that are putting on these events have insurance in place. And, and a lot of other things like that. The, the Calypso event is, is obviously an event that we all support, and it's, but it's a lot to put together. And if we're, I'm just looking for clarification as to if we declare it a significant event, at some point, it has to come back to the Special Events Committee to be, to be approved. So are, are we putting the horse before the cart? And that's where I'm looking for clarification.
No, my understanding is, in consultation with four other communities that did very similar things, is that we're putting the horse in front of the cart, so not the cart in front of the horse. So we need these, this, I mean, it, it, there's no amount of there's, there's no amount of difficulty that this is going to create. There's nothing wrong with declaring it a municipally significant event. What it's doing is it's allowing us as a committee to move forward with it, because without it, we can't move forward with it. So that would put into jeopardy any Port two hundred celebrations.
Ms. Leach?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you to counsel. If I could just clarify a few elements of this conversation for council's awareness. To begin, just confirming that the declaration of a municipally significant event is specific to the AGCO application for sale of alcohol and licensing associated therewith. I am not aware of any other process or requirement that would involve this declaration, nor am I aware of any reasons why an event wouldn't be able to proceed without the declaration. I would also add that specific to the Portoberfest event in recognition of staff's recent review, which found that the CIO has delegated authority to provide letters of that nature. That has been done for Portober, for Portoberfest. So they have been provided with a letter indicating that it's been declared a municipally significant event. So that one has been completed. And for any others, details surrounding the events, the nature of the events, have not been provided to staff or council in order to inform a decision of this nature. So by all means, in the future, if information can be provided, or if the events followed the special events process, this would be part of that process and come out as part of those conversations. And again, like with Portoberfest, like with the previous event in Belmont, staff, the CIO specifically, would have delegated authority to provide that information based on receipt of information from the event organizers.
Thank you, Ms. Leach. So just to clarify, there's certain things that we have to have done in order to declare it a significant event. And we've done that with Portoberfest, and when that information was satisfied, our CIO was able to declare that when that information was satisfied? Is that what I understood?
Yes, Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you to counsel, that is correct. Based on satisfactory receipt of information that helps to support staff understanding of the proposed event. So the same for any other subsequent events, looking for that declaration. We just need a little bit of information. Keeping in mind that such a declaration implies municipal endorsement in some way. So receipt of information to support that is very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leach. Does anybody else have any questions, or are we at a point where we're comfortable with voting on this? Ms. Leach?
And Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you to the rest of council again. I am not aware of the dates, given that they were just spoken verbally by the mayor. So if it's possible to get clarification for the purposes of crafting a motion, that would be appreciated.
Mr. Mayor?
July first, and I believe June fifteenth.
And the names of the events again, thank you.
Canada Day celebration. And on June fifteenth, I believe it's the Porch Party, but I'll defer to the Ward one counselor.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you to counsel. The motion reads, moved by Mayor Sloan, seconded by Counselor Graham, that the events currently being planned by the Port Stanley two hundred committee to be held in the Municipality of Central Elgin, namely Portoberfest, Canada Day celebrations, July first, twenty twenty-four, and Porch Party, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, be declared as municipally significant events for the purposes of their associated AGCO license applications.
Thank you. All those in favor? Closed? That motion carries. Can I get a mover and a seconder to go into closed? Counselor Connors, Mayor Sloan? Oh, sorry, Delaney?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you to counsel. I would just note that there is an additional item with council's agreement to add to the closed session agenda for tonight. That would be item CS six, which would be personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees pertaining to earth corporation. Is council in agreement with adding an additional item this evening?
That worked?
Thank you. Yep.
Okay. Called the, oh, mover, Counselor Connors moved it, Mayor Sloan seconded it. All those in favor to move into closed? That motion carries.